enter the meeting pin followed by the pound key. Thank you, you're joining a call with two other people.
Hello, this is Catherine, who else is on the line?
Sean Walker from the police department.
Hi Sean, thank you. Who just joined us? Did someone just join us?
This is Jared.
Hi Jared.
How are ya?
Busy busy. Renee?
Jeffrey? I'm here.
That's brilliant. Hi. How are you?
Good.
Okay. Did you bring a attendance sheet? A attendance sheet? Nope, it's okay. I usually do, I just...
Yeah, I know.
I wouldn't worry, I can just pick him.
Oh, I just thought it was already on.
I thought I would cut anything. It's probably a sheet ready to use.
I'm sitting here, turning on.
Your virtual meeting this evening, there are four public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning and one at the end of redevelopment agency meeting, and one at the beginning and the end of the city council meeting. When called on this, we will press at your net manager comments no more than three minutes and at your board repetition. Madam Cindy Clark, are we in compliance in about open meeting law?
Mary Lee, yes, we are in compliance.
Great, thank you. Tonight we have the opportunity to have the invocation given by our mayor pro tem, Councilman Broom. All of the pledging legions, we'll have Councilman Churchill take us through the pledge. Please rise.
Councilman? Thank you Mayor, can everyone, yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you very much Mayor. Yes, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity Mayor. I'm kind of looking forward to this one. Please bow your heads. Mariachi, God at peace. We invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have a different opinion, give us unity of spirit. Pleasure to each listen politely as others share their point of view. Pleasure to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great and for a great outcome. Pleasure to work as a whole rather than even as individuals, trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work collaboratively on our shared mission. Amen. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance, we remain standing. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In due to reach the flag of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. And Councilman, that was a great prayer. So what we're going to do now to listen up is we're going to journey to our redevelopment agency meetings right now. This is a meeting that we put in front of our city council meeting that we're required to have. We have some work to do on that. And then we'll go back to the agenda of the city council meeting. So if this time is time, I'm going to move this over to Councilman Barone for the redevelopment agency meeting.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let's, I'm sorry, I had to get back to my script. I dropped my script here. Well, let's go ahead and start, let's go ahead and join here the redevelopment agency meeting. So let's go ahead and start with the redevelopment agency first public forum. Now the time to speak on any posted redevelopment agency agenda item. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers or any written comment?
Mayor, Chairman Barone, we do not have any callers for the redevelopment agency public forum.
Thank you very much. In this case, I will now conclude the public forum. Let's go on to the agenda.
Mr. City Council, I mean, City Manager, are you there? We need to do something with that. Give us one second. I think Ryan had a, he was trying to get out of, over city attorney takeover. He'll most certainly give him his time.
Item number one, approve redevelopment's regular meeting agendas October 7, 2020 for possible action.
Thank you, Counselor. Do you have a recommendation?
Yes, we recommend you approve this to publish.
Thank you very much, Counselor. We have a recommendation. Can we have a call, a motion to approve this agenda?
Motion to approve this agenda, Councilman Black.
Thank you very much. Let's take a vote. I say, for myself, Barone, aye.
Lee, aye. Councilman Black, yes. Councilman Churchill, yes.
Corinne Brown, yes.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much, and that is approved. Let's go ahead and go on now to the redevelopment agency consent agenda.
Chairman Barone and agency members, the consent agenda consists of one set of minutes, staff recommends approval of the consent agenda to publish.
Thank you again there, Counselor. Can we please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent, Corinne Brown.
Thank you very much. Let's have, let's have a vote. Barone, yes.
Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Corinne Brown, yes.
Lee, yes. Thank you very much. Motion passed unanimously. Let's go on to the RDA business.
Item three, authorized payment of the renovation study and demolition of 310 East Lake Mead, South Boulevard, and the mountain fee fifty thousand is a let assessed to the year at estimated cost of $5,000 to the Million Environmental Consultants Nevada Inc. and in-house demolition at estimated cost thirty-five thousand. Possible action.
Thank you very much. Do we, I don't know, Counselor, do you know if there's a presentation on this item?
I do not believe there's a presentation.
Okay. I'd just make, I'd like to make a quick comment, you know. We're very happy to acquire this small little piece here of the island there on Lake Mead. And very soon it's going to be demolished. And of course, you know, we're looking forward very much to having new development. And this will be an important, a small but important piece of that future development. Can we have a motion to authorize the payment?
Corinne Brown.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Let's go ahead and call for a vote. Barone, yes.
Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Corinne Brown, yes.
Lee, yes. And the motion passes. Okay, let's go on to the second public forum, 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 forum. I don't know what's the matter with me today. We have another time for the public comment on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, are there any callers or written comments for this second public forum?
Chairman Barone, we have no written comment for, comment for the redevelopment agency nor any callers on the line.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. I'm now adjourned this meeting of the redevelopment agency, and we'll go back to the city council meeting.
Thank you very much. You did mention, you did mention what a great opportunity we had to get that couplet, that property there on Lake Mead. And our gateway to our city is going to be so beautiful in the future. That was a great item on your agenda today. I'm just honoring you for all the work you do in your district, okay?
The team has a lot, well, the team, they're the ones who do it. We're just the ones to haul it into the, into the vote, you know. The rest of the team, they're the ones to hook it, bite it, and drag it towards us, and we just kind of call it in the vote.
You do have a great redevelopment, great redevelopment team. Moving on to public forum on the city council meeting, time is now set aside to comment on posted agenda items and exclude discussion of public hearing items which will be heard later separately. So if you want to speak on any items listed under consent agenda or business, now is that time. On the call upon you to speak, I request that you manage your comments no more than three minutes and that you avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, do you have any written comments or callers on the phone at this time?
Mayor, we have two letters. We have one letter from Culinary Workers Union Local 226, and one from Nevada Resort Association. Both of those letters are in regards to item thirty, thirty-two, and thirty-three in regards to short-term rentals. And then we do have a caller on the line that I'll bring into the conference in just a second.
If you want to speak on any, the Resorts Association and the Culinary Union, all the council members have received your-
You may want to-
Letters and-
Caller, you may want to mute your PC. State your name for the record, please, and address.
Good afternoon, Dawn Christensen, representing the Nevada Resort Association, 10,000 West Charleston, speaking in regard to items thirty, thirty-two, and thirty-three. Good afternoon, Mayor Lee and council members. The Resort Association submitted a letter to you on behalf of our members on these items thirty, thirty-two, and thirty-three. And I'd like to highlight a couple of our comments for your consideration. We share your goals in creating sound public policy that addresses the illegal short-term rental market and preserves the quality of life in North Las Vegas neighborhoods. We hope you will take a slow and methodical approach to ensure the best outcome possible, and we hope, and we would like to see more time devoted to the process to allow additional engagement from all interested stakeholders. In addition, we hope you will consider adding a mandatory review of the regulations one year from adoption, should they move forward, to ensure that they are achieving your objectives and to allow the necessary revisions. As with any regulations, we believe it is essential to include robust enforcement. We ask that you evaluate whether the proposed regulations will be effective in mitigating the spread of illegal short-term operations as well as addressing code violations for those operating illegally. Strong enforcement continues to be a weak spot for many jurisdictions across the country. Given the current COVID-19 environment, we also ask that you consider whether the regulations sufficiently address health and safety for guests. As you know, resorts and hotels are held to the highest health and safety and sanitation and disinfection standards to protect employees, guests, and the community at large. We ask that you consider whether the proposed regulations are strong enough to ensure short-term rental operators are creating a safe environment. Those are just a few of our thoughts. We appreciate your consideration. In closing, we'd like to acknowledge staff and the work they have put into this, navigating best and effective practices in short-term rental regulations. It's no small task, and we look forward to working with you and staff on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And yes, we did receive your information, Dan. We bruised it, and it's been put on the record, and we'll continue to take a look at all these subjects that you've asked us to look at. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody else on the phone?
Mayor Lee, we have no one else on the phone.
Okay. At this time, we're going to go ahead and close the public forum and move on to the agenda.
Item four, approve city council regular meeting agenda of October 7, 2020. Mayor and council, there are two changes to the agenda. First, staff request to continue item eleven to the November fourth meeting. Next, the ward listed for item twenty should be changed from ward three and to ward two. With those changes, staff recommends approval of the agenda amended.
Thank you very much. Counselor, any comments or questions on that? If not, the chair will take the motion to approve the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda, as a matter of fact, and Black. We have a motion. All those in favor? Lee, aye. Barone, aye. Black, aye. Churchill, yes.
Corinne Brown, yes.
Unanimous, item is approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items five through twenty-five. Staff recommends approval of the consent, the consent agenda is published.
Thank you. Counselor, once again, any comments or questions on to approve the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion. Mayor, I'm going to say, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, sorry about that. Councilman Churchill has made a motion. All those in favor? Lee, aye. Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Corinne Brown, yes.
Did we get a vote from Councilmember Barone?
How much have you, have you heard me? Yes, Barone, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it's unanimous then. Thank you very much. Items approved.
I didn't have a chance to give my comment. The only thing I wanted to say is I wanted to definitely welcome and congratulate Rebecca Gibson as our chief of staff. That's related to item number eight.
Okay, that's nice. All right. Moving on to set future public hearing dates.
Item twenty-six, set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings from the City Planning Commission meeting.
Madam City Clerk, I sort of direct you to set any hearing dates as necessary.
Mayor, so noted.
Mayor, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings.
Item twenty-seven, ratify the 2020 corrections non-supervisor agreement between the Cities North Las Vegas Nevada and the North Las Vegas Police Officers Association for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
Thank you. I'll open this up for public hearing right now. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on this, Catherine? Madam City Clerk?
We have no written comments and no callers on the line for item twenty-seven.
Thank you very much. And I'll close the public hearing and call for motion to ratify the agreement. Lee, aye.
Was there a motion, Mayor?
Oh, I'll make a motion to ratify the 2020 correction non-supervisor agreement, item number twenty-seven, black. Black, we have a motion now. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I was moving along there. We have a motion. All those in favor? Lee, aye. Barone, aye. Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Corinne Brown, yes.
I think it's unanimous. Congratulations, that was a very good one.
Mayor, I'm, I'm, item twenty-eight, accept public comments regarding the proposed amendments to the FY 2018, 2019, and FY 2019 and 2020 annual action plans, which include reprogramming in the total amount of $1 million to the North Las Vegas rental program and the total amount of $970,000 to the North Las Vegas Small Business Stabilization Forgivable Loan Program. This is necessary as a result of the fire that burned a Canyon Electric building that was going to be the future downtown library. As a result, the city has to expend these monies fairly quickly, and we're not able to do so on that project. And so we're proposing to move a million dollars to the acquisition rehabilitation rental of single-family, multifamily units for affordable housing capacity. And then we're also proposing to move $970,000 to the Small Business Stabilization Forgivable Loan Program. And again, this is the public hearing comment process, and at your next meeting, you will actually see another agenda item, formally approving this item.
Wonderful. Good, good use of money, Mark. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the public wanting to speak or written notices to us?
We have no written comments on this item, nor do we have any callers on the line.
Okay, thank you. We don't need a motion on this item, so we're going to move on to business.
Item twenty-nine, receive presentation regarding quarterly report for the Clark County School District.
Thank you. We are prepared. Dr. Dustin, are you available? Dr. Dustin, Nancy, Region One. Have you, is she on the phone right now, Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Lee, he is on the phone.
Okay, we're prepared. Are you ready for your presentation?
He checked in about fifty minutes ago.
Good evening. Can you hear me at this time?
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Lee and city council members. My name is Dustin Mansell, and I'm the Region One Superintendent for the Clark County School District. This evening, I am here with the Region One Leadership Team, Elena Kryner-Wilson, School Associate Superintendent, Scarlett Perryman, School Associate Superintendent, and Dr. James Kuzma, School Associate Superintendent. Together, we will provide the quarterly update for October 2020. At this time, I will pass the presentation to Dr. Kuzma. Next slide, please. Slide number two. Thank you, Mayor Lee and City Council. One of the first items on Slide one talks about connectivity. There has been a significant effort put forth in collaboration with many community stakeholders to get our students connected and ready to learn. In early August, the Clark County School District worked with the state task force in partnership with community in schools to stand with the family support center. This source has been essential in providing a pathway for our most inneed students to get access to internet connectivity as well as making contact with families that hadn't responded to CTSB technology survey. The numbers that you see on the slide represent our efforts as of September 15th. However, we continue to make progress daily. As of the 23rd, 97.3% of our students have been contacted regarding their technology needs. With this percentage, this percentage did 66% as of August 10th. 96.5% of the students have indicated that they have reliable internet with the family support center assisting in connecting 15,000 students. Additionally, the schools and the IT team have done great work getting devices into the hands of our students with 238,000 devices deployed as of the 23rd, bringing their current student device percentage up to 97.4%. As mentioned, there has been significant effort to get us to this point, but there remains some work to do. In terms of enrollment, as of the 11th, enrollment was down by 3% from projection and 3.4% from the prior year. The change was relatively consistent among districts, with the exception of District E, which was in line with projection. With regard to participation, the five-day rolling average was approximately 94% as of the 15th, which is in line with the prior year. Additionally, at the time of the report, 99% of our active enrolled students were marked present at least once since the beginning of school. The largest change at the kindergarten level, which was off-projection by 3,162 or 13.9%. There are homeschool athletes of 2,122, and previous Clark County School District around 3,751 overall. One of the features we've used this year to assist teachers and parents has been GoGuardian. And from an operations perspective, GoGuardian was a great solution as we transitioned to a full-distance education environment. Our primary focus was on the product's content filtering and theft recovery features. However, it has also proven to be a powerful classroom management tool as well as providing teachers with the tools they need to ensure students are focused on tasks. GoGuardian also provides the flexibility for teachers to assist students on an individual basis, real-time. Important to note is while video conferencing is a listed feature of GoGuardian, it is not currently enabled for district use as Google Meet is the approved virtual meeting tool for the Clark County School District. Beyond GoGuardian's filtering and classroom management features, it also provides an important feature, the suicide and self-harm prevention tool referred to as Beacon. the suicide and self-harm prevention tool referred to as Beacon. Leveraging advanced, uh, AI and human insight, this tool escalates flagged activity to the appropriate designated personnel to proactively address. Go Guardian will be presenting several training sessions tailored to feed the Clark County School District educators in the month of October. The dates will be communicated in the, in the upcoming weekly wire. Google Meet, while there were limited issues with Google Meet during last spring's transition to distance education, it became apparent early on in the beginning of this school year that data hosting controls were required. In working with Google dedicated resources as well as the Google regional leadership, Clark County School District was able to opt into the early release of new Google Host Control features. The knocking feature prevents users from entering the meet until the meeting organizer is present. Additionally, uninvited users must knock to gain admittance to the meeting. The new chat lock and present, present lock features provide teachers with control over when students can access the chat feature or share the screen. Google was also awarded special controlled features which should be released in the coming weeks. Next slide, please. Making sure students are fed, there has been a top priority as well in the Clark County School District. With the start of the school year, we expanded the number of our district's usage sites from forty-six to two hundred and ninety-one. As of September twenty-third, we had just served shy of one point three million meals since the start of the school year. Food service operations were initially in part constrained, operating under the Nevada School Lunch Program. However, the USDA did announce an extension a couple of weeks ago to the school year, which has been a great benefit to the community. Prior to the waiver extension, we were averaging forty-two point five thousand meals a day. Since operating, we've been able to average about seventy-four thousand, which is an increase of seventy-three percent. And I do have some updated information as of October now, up to this, uh, October sixth was the last date. We have a grand total of three hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-four. And total year-to-date from the beginning of August till now, we're at about two million, over two million total meals, averaged daily around sixty-five thousand. I'd like to introduce next, uh, my associate, uh, School Associate Superintendent Scarlett Perryman.
Next slide, please.
Slide please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee and City Council members. I'm going to talk about MathWorks, which is our diagnostic assessment tool called Measures of Academic Progress. So as we look at guidance, guidance was developed for the educators, students, and families. And some of you may have seen Clark County School District children taking this diagnostic through distance learning. So at the start of the year, over eighteen thousand educators and support professionals were provided professional development to teach the kids and the families how to administer this assessment at home. There were videos and lesson plans for the teachers and at-home guides for the families available in English and Spanish. And the schools worked with the families to help the students take this diagnostic assessment successfully. We were providing accommodations and students for accommodations can have them such as text-to-speech, an interpreter, a bilingual dictionary, a thesaurus, and a scribe. And it has an embedded tool, the text-to-speech within the system. There were some challenges resulting in some connectivity issues, device is not able to access the testing platform. And the company itself had some nationwide platform issues that impacted us with a three-day pause in testing. However, the schools really worked together with the families to ensure students could have a successful testing experience. And families had a remarkable opportunity to see their students perform on this assessment in person. Next slide, please. In discussing the wellness checks that the district is performing with all of our families and students, the attendance officers have conducted over, this slide says one thousand two hundred and twenty, but it's actually as of September twenty-fourth, over two thousand fifty-five wellness check home visits with eight hundred and fifty-five two-way communication where the school district employee speaks with a family member who speaks back with the school district employee member. And their goal is to make that connection between the family and the school so that the school can work together with the family and providing some resources to assist families assisting their children with at-home learning. Each school has something that is called the Multidisciplinary Leadership Team and we're required to start the team to support the needs of the students. Now that is being done on a tiered approach with student contact based on the needs of the students. Some students may need more frequent contact than other students so that we can ensure their wellness at home during distance learning. Central services support in the district are very much here to support students. They've partnered with family services. They've provided assistance mandatory recording during distance learning so we can certainly keep track of students in need and work together. We still use Safe Voice, which is very active for anyone to call in to report a concern, including the students themselves. And we have our Safe Schools Professionals, also known as social workers and counselors, working to reach out to the students and families to provide support that may be direct to students or assisting families with other social service needs. At this time, I'm going to pass the presentation to Elena Criner Wilson. Next slide, please.
Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor Lee and City Council. Um, as you can see on the slide, this is a sample weekly instructional guide. And what that means is that this is a sample schedule that students would receive from their school um, to be able to engage in distance learning, um, from home. And we know that distance education involves a full-day commitment for students to meet the learning standards. Within the instructional guide, schools worked collaboratively to develop the student schedule so students knew exactly how many minutes of synchronous or real-time learning they would have and the other components of the instructional day for students, which was thoughtfully put together with school teams and parent input. This included asynchronous independent learning, independent work, paper correspondence, use of online tools and resources for the instruction and group work as well. The schedules, as you can see, also include virtual office hours, which are opportunities for students to connect with their teachers, to answer questions they may have and talk through their coursework. Schedules also include wellness checks, as my colleague previously referred to on the previous slide. And also, of course, it's important to have that nutrition break for students, so a thirty-minute lunch break for students as well. Um, after we rolled this information out, uh, to our school communities, it was important that our principal school teams work together to listen and observe what was going on. And so in reflection and responsiveness to the needs of their communities, um, some schools have been making adjustments to the schedules based on the needs of their school community. Next slide, please. The next slide talks about recording synchronous lessons. Um, just as we would have in a traditional regular school day, pre-COVID, there are times when students may miss school and they would be absent. And we needed to provide an opportunity for students to make up the information that they missed. This is the same type of opportunity, but just done in a virtual setting. As you can see, educators are encouraged to record synchronous sessions, especially again if students are absent during the synchronous or real-time lessons. Um, we also, of course, are abiding by FERPA federal law, which prohibits showing or releasing personally identifiable information of students publicly unless the parent or guardian has authorized such release of information. And so to support our teachers and all the hard work that they're doing to ensure students have the opportunity to make up, um, lessons and information, we have provided them strategies to protect student information while recording synchronous sessions. In addition, we've provided them alternatives to recording the synchronous sessions. And so if we have parents or guardians out there listening right now, um, you can still complete the authorization for release form of education records for your child. Um, all you have to do is submit the authorization form via infinite campus or through paper authorization. Next slide, please. So supporting students with disabilities, we know that we work with diverse learners in the Clark County School District and we want to make sure we're meeting, um, the needs of all of our students. So students with disabilities or with an individualized education program, we have our educators looking on providing synchronous or real-time lessons and asynchronous or independent instruction based on the student's IEP goals and standards. Professional learning has also been created and led based on the feedback and requests from, um, different groups such as the Clark County Education Association and educators to assist in distance education structure. Professional learning videos are also provided and available for teachers to use for teaching, um, parent communication and students on the Student Services Division website. The IEP revisions without a meeting were also conducted with families with an intended completion date of October second, twenty-twenty, to provide specialized designed instruction in the distance education structure and collaborate with parents and guardians. Teletherapy is also being conducted for students through Google Meet for related services such as speech, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. Assistive techno- occupational and physical therapy equipment is also being deployed to students as long as their families approve it and accept the responsibility for its use. Multidisciplinary team is also conducting in-person assessments for students. These are occurring on an appointment basis on campus and sites around the district. Child find, um, also have in-person assessments and these are occurring after school hours for students who need to be assessed for eligibility. GATE, Dusted and Talented Educational Assessments are occurring in person and by appointment basis on campuses for identified third-grade students. School-based health centers that are located in portables on campuses outside the physical building are meeting with families on an appointment basis. And we do just want to remind you and urge at any time if you feel like your child is struggling with learning, please feel free to reach out to the principal or the student support. At this time, I'll pass the presentation to Doctor Mansell. Next slide, please.
The English Language Learner Division has implemented several district-wide systems and supports to meet the educational requirements outlined by the Nevada Department of Education. Uh, these systems and supports are to ensure equity and access for English language learners and their families. First, to support our educators, Clark County School District is providing professional learning and instructional coaching focused on ensuring student discourse, vocabulary development, language acquisition opportunities are all being provided during distance learning. Weekly real-time support for educators has also been made available for teachers to log in and get real-time support from the Region English Language Learner Division team. And this is through Canvas. All CCSD educators can access the support team. Our interactive ELL Google classrooms give educators, students, and families access to resources and English language learner staff for virtual coaching. And this can also be accessed at ELL Teacher Canvas course. Uh, these services and supports are provided at each grade level band. And finally, CCSD is continuing to provide parent outreach efforts in collaboration with our Faces Department. And these include translated communication, parent guardian workshops, and access to language development resources. Next slide, please. Currently, we have three rural schools in the Clark County School District that are implementing the hybrid instruction model. The hybrid instruction model consists of our three cohorts. Cohort A students participate in face-to-face instruction on Monday, Tuesday, and distance learning on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Cohort B students participate in distant learning on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and face-to-face instruction on Thursday, Friday. And cohort C students participate in full-time distance learning, Monday through Friday. Currently, we have four rural elementary schools implementing the traditional face-to-face instruction model. These rural elementary schools have small enrollment and can adhere to the Governor's Directive in the Nevada Department of Education's guidance for reopening our schools. Next slide, please. I know this was a lot of information and at this time, we are happy to take any questions, but you may hang up.
Great. And we've been following along, as you said, next slide, we've been moving along with you. Uh, we have a couple educators that are on our council and plus I'll have some questions unless they ask them first. Uh, Councilwoman Goins Brown, do you have any questions?
I do, Mayor, thank you. And Doctor Mansell, thank you for your presentation. I have three questions, actually. Um, my first question is in relation, relationship to the math assessment. Um, how is that, um, the result going to be shared and what is it counting for for this year or is it? Um, my second question is about, um, T F T A P T time. I hope I still have the acronym right. Is that going to happen at the regular time and how is that going to look or will that be pushed back since the start of school? Pushed back. And then my last question, are all C's going to be promoted at the end of the year?
Hi, good afternoon. This is Scarlett Perryman, School Associate Superintendent. Regarding the math assessment, uh, we are very excited to be looking at the data at this time as schools have initial glance at how the students did. So it is to be used as a reference tool at this time. And it gives us an idea of where students are at this time since they exited due to COVID closure in March. The last math assessment was given in December, beginning of January of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. So this math assessment will give us an idea of any gap in learning that has occurred due to school closure and give our teachers the ability to look at student performance on specific standards so they can really determine their instruction with students, small group instruction, scaffolding instruction, and make those instructional decisions at this time.
In regard to the parent, teacher, student conferences, those are scheduled for next Wednesday. They will be conducted pretty much as usual where parents, teachers, and students will meet and discuss their progress thus far. Next Wednesday, those will be held virtually and I know many schools have already sent out invitations to schedule those conferences with the families. And in regard to student promotion, those are always conversations that are had between the parent or guardian, teacher, and school principal.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, I'm just coming in distance with the students that still have not logged in or checked in. You know, we don't know where some of those students are. I'm just assuming that that's probably going to be a conversation as well. On how to reach those kids.
That is correct, definitely. And currently, we are working with the Family Support Center along with our district-wide social workers and some community members who are helping identify those students and doing home visit. Thank you.
Councilman Barone, I know that you have an issue, uh, not an issue, but you're interested in this conversation. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, well, uh, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I do appreciate that, number one. Um, I just wanted to, uh, again, uh, recognize and congratulate, uh, my former boss, the former principal of Rantle High School, Doctor Kuzma, who is now on the upper levels here of this administrative team in Region One. Uh, congratulations. And, uh, number two, um, uh, and I, and again, I, uh, I look forward to coming, uh, having a meeting there at your new office there, I guess, at the, uh, Mojave High School site. Um, I just have a, a, a couple of questions. Uh, I mentioned, uh, casually this time my colleagues, since I still teach at Rantle High School. And there's a bit of confusion, um, amongst the, uh, the teachers uh, that kind of focused on the students because of course they got wind of it. And it has to do with a, um, a one question with three options, um, um, a very short survey regarding what our plans were in case, uh, uh, you know, if we were called to go back to work. Either yes, you plan to go back, or no, don't go to Black, or, or, and of course, there's an intermediate. Are there any, uh, are, are there any plans at this time for us, uh, going back, uh, in any form, in person to the, the, the school sites and, uh, and to, you know, I guess, um, do away with the, the current distance education problem?
That's a wonderful question. Um, to answer regarding the survey that was sent out to all faculty and staff, I'm looking really at our teacher willingness. It is just a board request item, um, but to identify whether or not, when we do come back, that is a decision by the Board of Trustees.
It was, uh, it caused quite a bit of stir, you know, uh, amongst the, the, the teachers. A lot of them, they, uh, they weren't sure what exactly to, to write and it was, it was just stated, uh, maybe, uh, a little, a little more awkwardly than my comment here, I guess. Um, well, number two, um, one, let's take that back. Number two, one, take that back. Yeah, you know, and again, you know, it was just, there was quite a bit of confusion, and it caused, and again, it was, I think some of the educators shared that, I think, with parents and with students, and it kind of like, you know, caused quite a bit of confusion, you know, those kind of things that get shared, whether like or not. Just a couple more questions. I do have one question. It seems like a lot of families do have connectivity, but one problem that we're seeing time and time again is the connectivity doesn't necessarily actually translate into the bridging of the digital life between the families that have connectivity and know how to use it and the families who can't. I sort of have, for instance, there's a single grandmother here who she's looking after her two grandsons, and she has no idea how to access any of the, any of the technology to track, you know, her grandkids' progress, or their daily attendance, or any way to contact, you know, the teachers. And I realize that with all the limitations that we face, you know, we're tasked, the CCSD is tasked with an impossible thing, trying to provide services for over 200,000 students, you know, and, but I was wondering if there are any plans at any level to maybe conduct, I'm thinking in-person, small-group training sessions for parents and/or guardians who are kind of stymied with this, with this kind of formidable task of a crash course, quite frankly, on how to maintain contact. And what I'm thinking of, the reason that I have is, again, district-sponsored and probably site-based or organized, small-group sessions, probably in computer, there are computer labs that can probably be set up to do social distancing and can probably be properly sanitized afterwards, calling parents in in small groups and showing them how to use, you know, the very basics of these technological, they can all do that, you know, Canvas and IC, and I think if they're conducted, and they're also conducted in bilingual fashion, I think it'd go a long, a long way for filling in the students who are at risk of falling for the cracks.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Scarlett Perryman. You brought up a fantastic point with a lot of opportunities there to explore. And to your grandmother who's in the audience, absolutely, we understand the difficulty it's been to almost learn a new language at home with all of these terms and all of these tools, Canvas, Google Classroom, StudySync, everything that a school is using, let alone Infinite Campus and all the others. It really is a new language. To your grandmother and any other parents who may be listening, I would encourage them to reach out directly to the school. The schools are absolutely phenomenal right now in how the office employees, administration, support staff, the teachers are all taking the time to show the parents. And by parents, I mean guardians, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, anyone who's working with the children, how to access these tools. And that is the first place for any family to go to to get that support and a one-to-one training, basically. And then you had a great idea that we will take back also, which is that school district-wide training of our families, and again, I mean, anybody who's caring for the children, on how to access these tools, because a lot of these tools give us new ways of educating students, and we certainly want to take back new ways of educating students and looking into the future. So that education of our families and helping their own children is going to be quite key. We do have a Faces Station that is housed throughout the district that provides a lot of these trainings, and I know they're looking at their own curriculum to get out that type of family meeting right now. And also for our bilingual, our second language families, that is a critical, critical need also to make sure that all of our parents have access to the tools needed to support their children. Right now, the school is the best, best place to go, and thank you so much. We will definitely take back that great idea.
Yeah, thank you very much. And just one last thing. I mean, there are some people, probably maybe younger parents, who might, they might be accustomed, you know, to actually watching a video, a webinar, you know, something like online, but they're just some of us, myself included, I think, who, you know, we learn differently, and we do need someone to sit down and show them step by step. I've had a few parents come in and taken the time to show them and their kids, how do you, and they just need step by step, and even like myself, I'm almost blind, I'm still not quite as blind as them, and it's a little bit better than blindly than blind, but I'm just saying that an in-person step like that for those people who really need it would be very, very well appreciated. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Councilman. At this time, the rest of us who aren't didactic, if we have any questions for Dr. Dustin Mansell, he's available. Scott, do you have any? Councilman Churchill, do you have any?
Uh, no, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll finish up with this. Dr. Kuzma, it's great to hear your voice, and I met a wonderful person who has tried to throw your shoes over at Rancho. She seems like a fantastic person, and we're looking forward to working with her as well as you did with you. I guess I have one question. Are all the other principals that we've gone so fond of still involved in our district, or did some retire? We had some changes on the principals of, like, the high schools. I guess that'd be my question.
Well, I just wanted to say, first of all, Mayor, that for 11 years I was at Rancho, I just wanted to thank you for your support and for North Las Vegas City Council. I mean, the first day I met you, you gave me your cell phone number and asked me to call you anytime I need something, and you always came through when I called you, so I thank you for that. Secondly, I was super excited when Dr. Mansell called me and let me know that I would be a part of Region One, because I'm still right here in North Las Vegas, and I've grown very fond of the community, and I still look forward to working with North Las Vegas schools and helping the kids here to reach their fullest potential and provide them with as many opportunities as possible. As far as the number of principals that have turned over, I mean, it's, I haven't, I don't have any knowledge right now of a lot of principals that have changed at the high school. I know we're changing, Sprecher Middle School will be getting a new principal here soon, so we'll be starting that process, but that's, I'm kind of new, and I'm the rookie here in the region, so I'm sure Dr. Rancho or Miss Criner could also explain some of the other promotions that have happened.
That is correct. At the high school level for North Las Vegas within Region One, there have been no additional changes in the high school principalship.
You know, that couldn't be better news to my ear. We love those principals. They're great. Well, I think we've had a great presentation, Dr. Mansell. I would ask if Dr. Kuzma would schedule an appointment to come over, tell me he's got his new job, and tell me exactly what I can expect from him or what he needs from me, you know, so, Doctor, if that'd be fine, I'd appreciate that. But at this point in time, Council, we don't need a motion on this. This was just educational for us, and it sounded like a very, very good presentation. We're very excited to hear these results that you guys are getting in these tough times, so thank you once again, Doctor Mansell, and we will move on. Director Jordan?
Mayor, Council, item 30, adopt business impact statement regarding ordinance number 3041, amending Title V of the municipal code, which is addressed as impact to businesses from proposed regulations and license fees for short-term rentals. Staff in preparing this business impact statement mailed it to all the stakeholders that have provided input to the city in the working group. We've also provided it to the industry that attended the August 13th meeting that we held here at City Hall. The impact is also sent to Airbnb, the RBO, Nevada Resorts Association, Greater Las Vegas Association of Realtors, and the Las Vegas Metro Chamber. We received three calls in response to the proposed ordinance. Two callers were simply asking the timeline of the proposed meeting, ordinances before the city council, and another caller had questions regarding noise complaints and occupancy limits. I should note, too, that as part of our mailing, we not only sent over, sent out the proposed Title V, but to be transparent, and because they work together, we also mailed the proposed Title 17 ordinance to everybody that I just mentioned for them to be able to review as well. We did receive a letter from the Nevada Resort Association, asking for, just clarifying some things or indicating some concerns they had. Some of that would be that would the city residents know if there was going to be a short-term proposed or approved next to home maybe they were purchasing? They were also concerned that would we be able to maintain access to affordable housing, and will we be able to protect the quality of life for the residents within the city? And of course, we're proposing things that would have distance requirements. There's a Good Neighbor, we're sure that they have to send out annually. As ownership changes, we will require a conditioning use permit and a business license, and as a result, we'll be able to map those things as well, so if people have questions, they will be able to come in and have access to that, and give staff an opportunity to be able to make sure that future short-term operators are complying with the separation requirements. The Nevada Resort Association also has concerns that short-term rental be handled in the same way that lodging is handled, and of course, we have as part of Title V that they would be required to pay the room tax that's associated with lodging. And as far as cleanliness goes, disinfecting because of the COVID-19 and other issues, they would be required to comply with any state and health district requirements when it comes to cleaning facilities. There were questions or some concerns brought up by people regarding the proposed licensing fees that we were going to have, and those were based on the cost of a special use permit because the industry did not want to go through that process. But a special use permit is $1,000, and the initial fee would be $1,000, 900 for the business license, and 100 for the conditioning use permit, and then annually thereafter it'd be $900 plus any room tax fees that they would have to admit. Otherwise, staff did not make any modifications to the ordinances based on the comments that we've received.
Thank you. So adopting this business impact statement means everyone's notified, and in two weeks we will actually have this on the agenda. So if anybody has any questions, they get ahold of you and Councilman Black, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So with that, unless there's any comments or questions from the council, do we have any? The chair will take a motion.
Yeah, Mayor, no, I just wanted to say, I do appreciate the input that brought in, both by the coronary union, in particular, their wish that, of course, that North Las Vegas, they recognize that North Las Vegas is a community of choice when it comes to affordable housing. What I mean by affordable housing, housing, of course, that is well within the reach of their members and people that we want, people who are planning to build their futures and help build our community. And I am very confident that our final, our final ordinance that comes out will preserve North Las Vegas as only places where you can feel, you know, your money will still go a long way, and will not be a place where we're going to be, of course, bought up to have a bunch of homes that are short-term rental. And so with that, unless, unless Councilman Black wants to make the motion, with that, I'll let him make the motion to accept the assessment.
We'll take your motion, Councilman. That's great. So we have a motion to adopt the business impact statement. No more comments or questions? Not hearing them? Lee? Aye.
Barone? Aye.
Black, aye.
Churchill, yes?
Goins Brown, yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Council. Item 31. Ratifying pass and adopt resolution number 2656, Resolution Ratifying Declaration of Emergency Directive 2020-03, dated September 10th, 2020. Do you have any comments or questions on this directive? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Motion to approve item number 31, Councilman Black.
We have a motion. Any other discussions? Saying none? Lee? Aye.
Barone? Yep.
Black? Yes.
Churchill, yes?
Goins Brown, yes.
Any notes? Items unanimous. Moving on to ordinances introduction only. Director Jordan?
Mayor, Council, item 32, introduce ordinance number 3040, ordinance amended Title 17 of the municipal code of the city of North Las Vegas, ZOAO2 2020, related to permitted uses to allow short-term rentals and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item 33, introduce ordinance number 3041, amending Title V of the municipal code related to business license, licenses generally to include provisions for short-term rentals and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item 34, introduce ordinance number 3042, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 2.37 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from a C1 neighborhood commercial district to an R4 high-density residential district, ZN11 2020, Sienna Centennial and North Fifth, for property located at the northwest corner of Centennial Parkway and North Street, and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item 35, introduce ordinance number 3043, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 9.93 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from a C1 neighborhood commercial district and an R4 high-density residential district to C2 general commercial district, ZN12 2020, Sienna Centennial and North Fifth, for property located at the northwest corner of Centennial Parkway and North Street, and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item 36, introduce ordinance number 3044, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 1.22 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from an R1 single-family low-density district to PED slash PID, Planned Unit Development District, Planned In-Fill Development District, ZN13 2020, Carrying Revere Retail Building, consisting of one 8,384 square foot retail building for property located at the northeast corner of Perry Avenue and Revere Street, and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item 37, introduce ordinance number 3045, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 36.94 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from a PED, Planned Unit Development District, to an RCL, Single Family Combat Lot Residential District, ZN14 2020, Martin Luther King and Corley, for property located at the northwest corner of Martin Luther King Boulevard and Corley Avenue, and providing for other matters property related thereto. And item 38, introduce ordinance number 3047, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 8.28 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from a C1 neighborhood commercial district to a R3 multifamily residential district, ZN16 2020, Lam and Tropical SEC, for property located at the southeast corner of Lam Boulevard and Tropical Parkway, and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much, Director. Councilman Goins Brown, it looks like everything big happening in the city is now happening in your district. I'm excited to see that activity over there. Congratulations. Yeah, way to go. Moving on to appointments.
Item number 39, appointed by Councilman Goins, Councilman Goins Brown, for the citizen members of Parks, Parks Recreation Cultural Revival Board to fill an unexpired term ending November 30, 2024. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Dr. Michael Maxwell. I've known him for quite a long time. He actually reached out to me because he's been excited and wanted to get involved more with the city of North Las Vegas. Currently, he's the Executive Director at Ocelar Learning Centers, and his professional background is in education and social services. He's also been involved with Parks Recreation while coaching youth sports, and he has a great interest about being on our Parks, Arts, Recreation and Culture Revival Board. And I know Cass has had conversations with him and feels pretty confident that he's going to do a great job on this board. With that, I'd like to appoint Dr. Michael Maxwell. That's my motion.
We have a motion, Council. Any comments, questions? Saying none? Lee? Aye.
Barone? Yep.
Black? Yes.
Churchill, yes?
Goins Brown, yes.
Yes, congratulations, Councilwoman. Moving on to city managers' report.
Mayor, Council, I was in a meeting, I wasn't here for item 27, so we do need to buy for NRS, I need to put into the record the financial impact of the contract. I think it'd be of the contract, I think it'd be easiest if, if, if the Council's desire, I, could we bring item twenty-seven back?
Yeah, let's bring item twenty-seven back and we'll remove the vote off that and hear the, hear the item right now.
Okay, will you vote to bring item twenty-seven back?
Council, uh, chair will take the motion to bring item twenty-seven back to help the, the city manager fulfill his obligation to NRS, chair will take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to bring uh, item number twenty-two back for discussion.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Lee, aye?
Brown, aye?
Black, yes.
Churchill, yes? Going Brown, yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Item number twenty-seven, ratify the twenty twenty correction, corrections non-supervised agreement between the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, and the North Las Vegas Police Officers Association for the period of July one, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Mayor, I appreciate you uh, allowing this item to come back so that it can fulfill the obligations that management has under the NRS. Um, this is a, the financial impacts of, of this agreement, there are currently two, fifty-two positions that are covered under this agreement, which represents four point seven seven million dollars uh, per year. This agreement allows for us to keep base wages flat, which is consistent with the twenty twenty-one budget. In addition, the agreement allows us to make changes to the city's premium medical insurance plan, which currently has approximately three hundred ninety-five planned participants, um, including active employees and retirees. Um, as I've been briefing the council, or as we presented, as we brought each of these contracts before you all over the last uh, six months, um, we do have a financial challenges um, in the Valley and in the city in particular, uh, year-over-year seat tax for the first five months, uh, from March to July is down twenty-two percent. Um, given that seat tax is the largest source of revenue that we have in the city, this is a, a significant drop, um, that impacts our citywide operations. Uh, based on revised revenue projections from the local government fiscal working group, we estimate the citywide revenue will be about seventy-three million dollars lower than what was uh, pre-COVID estimates through June twenty twenty-two. In response to this ongoing economic crisis, uh, management has postponed, um, it's canceled this project, we went through soft freezes, um, additionally, twenty twenty-one, a budget approved by council did not include any cost of living adjustments or base wage increases for employee groups. At this time, the primary concern that we have is the long-term viability of our tax base. This is one of the reasons why it's so hard to make sure that the cares dollars are put back into the community so we can shore up this tax base. Um, it's, we, we continue to struggle with the fact that it took us five months to collage these dollars from Carson City, but now that we've got them, we're putting them to work. In fact, we have a program that went out uh, this week for uh, to help people that are behind on their rent and mortgages, we've had over sixty people uh, that have applied for today, the first day went live. So we are seeing these dollars make a difference because it is very important that we shore up this, this tax base. Um, for this reason, we've worked very closely with our bargaining groups, including, including POA with this agreement, um, to make sure that we do what we can to, to tighten the belt and keep uh, our, our fiscal costs down. So that is uh, that's my presentation for, for the, if you, that's my presentation for um, for this, for this item, are there any questions or comments?
Any comments or questions to the city manager on this new contract? Hearing none, the chair will take a motion.
I'd like to uh, make a motion to uh, uh, I, um, to pass uh, the, the, I, I, I guess, let's pass the same um, item, uh, with the uh, notes uh, made by the city manager.
We have a motion on item twenty-seven, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, um, the chair will take a motion, Lee, I mean, the chair will take a vote, Lee, aye?
Brown, aye?
Black, yes.
Churchill, yes?
Going Brown, yes.
Thank you, it's once again unanimous, thank you for that. Um, moving on to public forum, um, just wanted to comment, just in the, uh, for managers' comment, we, we, we have had some questions from both staff, um, and from the community about virtual meetings. One of the things that we've done is we're following closely uh, the medical experts in the community, we're following closely with the Southern Health District, um, we, we have done that throughout the pandemic, we relied on them, um, we actually do rely on them and see if their counsel advise something. Uh, we, Councilman Black, are you guys returning back to meetings?
It's gonna... We're gonna, we're at the end of October for our annual meeting, the third, Thursday of the month, we'll have our uh, meeting virtually, and as I mean, we're going to determine where we go forward, I anticipate uh, November's meeting being in person, if, if the trend stays the way they are relative to infection rates and things like that.
So that's probably kind of part of the answer to where we're at, um, I, you know, one of the things that our financial director, uh, Will Hardy, mentioned yesterday in the meeting, I think it was yesterday or the day before, he talked about how, you know, this is the new normal, where we're at is the new normal, and waiting for things to, to change in order for us to react to them, um, is, might not be the, the most prudent thing to do, because we are, we are probably going to be kind of where we're at right now for a while. At first, what we were doing was tracking with, um, the, the governor had released a plan that had different phases, and we were tracking with the phases, but then he redacted the phases, but now I think the phases are back in, so we're really not able to really follow the, the, that guidance which we were using in the very beginning to, as we change phases within the state, then we would just near those phases, um, because if you recall, we did go to in-person meetings, but then there was a spike, things were run, were rolled back by the, by the state, so we rolled back also. Um, our desire is to, to have it start back, um, as possibly as soon as the next meeting, but probably no later than, than, than two meetings. We will have, we will continue with this virtual component, so that those residents and, and folks that are either unable to, um, or uncomfortable with coming to the meeting, they'll still be able to participate, but then we will uh, have council and the team there in chambers. Because of the design of chambers and, and the way that we have the, the podium for addressing council, it's a li- it's a little further away from council than it is from staff, so we're gonna, we're making some changes there that allows, that we'll bring that back so that there's, we're able to comply with the CDC and, and the governor's guidance on social distancing, so it's really flexible, flexible there, yeah, some modifications to that to ensure that we're protecting staff, uh, and protecting the public, so that's kind of the update that I have in, in regards to the virtual meetings.
Thank you, do you have any other comments for the council or, or, and thank you very much, we will close the manager's report. I will add to that though, that I know the legislature right now is still considering limiting all access to the building, doing everything virtual, I mean, it, it could change day to day, but we would like to get back together, be in the public forum meetings, so, uh, uh, moving on to public forum, now is the time for the public to speak on issues, not on the agenda. Remember, the council may hear your thoughts and ideas, but might not take any action tonight upon them or anything raised during the public forum. As a city clerk, do we have any written comments, or is there anybody in the bond that would like to address the council at this time?
We have no written comments, Mayor, but we do have a caller on the line, I'll bring the caller in. Hello caller, state your name and address for the record.
Jeff Alfred, thirty-eight, two-eight, East River Drive, North Las Vegas. Good evening, everyone, I hope everyone's doing well, um, I wanted to make a few comments about, uh, Mayor, I want to make a few comments about short-term rentals, I spoke at the planning meeting last month, the city is putting in a lot of effort into this ordinance, the ordinance is plural, that we're writing for the record, and there's a lot of paperwork associated with them. My main concern is that we, I would estimate that more than half the population of North Las Vegas was HOAs, and because most HOAs have it written in your C C and Rs, that short-term rentals are not allowed, it is a very sticky issue, not just in North Las Vegas, but Valley wide. So my only complaint about the whole ordinance is that I don't think the city has gone through the effort to get any input from HOAs about rules, regulations, you know, enforcement, so I think that's just a um, small, minor default in the whole, you know, proposal. So I just wish the city would have done more to bring in HOA opinions and have some conversations and see if it would have altered any of the ingredients of all the ordinances. Thank you for your time, have a good night.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Jeff, and I guess while we're in this, before we leave, I just, uh, the city attorney, Ms. McCallum Moore, notified before the meeting that one of our dear former residents, Lloyd George, uh, federal judge who, the building, the federal judge building is named after, has passed away today, and I don't know if a lot of you knew this, but he was a, a wonderful leader when he first moved here, he lived in North Las Vegas, had a church calling, uh, that was substantial at that time, and he also uh, involved himself in the local government, so we're saddened to hear that, I'm glad the city attorney notified me that, and um, I just want you to know before you read the paper, that a great, a great, a great man has, has, has left the earth. So anyway, with that, and we have no other comments written, we're going to uh, we, we close the public forum right now, thank you, I'm closing the public forum and this meeting is adjourned, bye-bye.